Everybody bearing with another Zoom meeting? I know there are those who prefer it and those who don't, I would honestly be much prefer to be in person. But with the direction COVID numbers are going, that is certainly not at all practical. So we'll continue to do this probably for the next couple of months. Certainly, we plan on the January meeting being a Zoom meeting and then we'll kind of play it by ear from there, but I would anticipate unless something changes drastically, which I don't anticipate right after Christmas, that we'll probably be on Zoom for a little longer. Um, all right, so let's start with, we kind of have a, because there's only one meeting this month and last, we're kind of doing a hybrid of Department Head in Public a little bit. So we'll, we'll start with the Department Head meeting. So Tal?
All right, it's actually been pretty quiet for me. You know, I know that we're going to talk about things later on, so I won't get into too much depth as far as the offers on the DPW building. But looking at those, I'm also doing some research for seeing if there's anything that we can do to help the folks down on the riverfront by Beckham's with the unloading of barges late at night. And, you know, there are an existing, pre-existing use, and so, you know, the pickings are slim for now, but I'm still continuing to look for that. And, you know, we're still not making a whole lot of progress with the town and the community center. But it's still out there. We're still working on it.
Does the pre-existing use, does that somehow? I mean, look, we're not trying to kick them out, but 2:00 AM? Come on.
Yeah.
Don't we have any ability to influence that?
What I'm looking at is what have they historically done there? Have they done, or is this a new outbreak of what they're doing, basically? Have they always done nighttime barges or only during the day?
Yes, they have.
They've always done nighttime stuff?
Yes, they have. It's nothing new.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, the pickings are slim, but I'm still looking for something, anything that we can do.
Okay. All right.
That's really it for me.
Okay, I've got some data MJ sent me on utilities. You know, previous lease, et cetera. So I'm going to put a letter together this week or this weekend. Tal, and I'll run it past you. Rob sent me something. I think we'll just take care of this via email. He seems, seems amenable. I just need to get him the numbers. And I think what I'm looking at, you know, I'd like to kind of get a break out of the square footage of the building. And it looks like when we just take the utility costs, it essentially amount, the utility and cleaning costs and share it, you know, even 50/50 looks relatively close to where that lease agreement was. So, you know, I think we come up with something that's reasonable. I just want to get it taken care of here, you know, get him something by the, before the new year, which I'll get something out to you. You know, he still said they didn't vote on the community center and he's still saying it's because of something we haven't done, I guess.
Well, I can read, I can read you an email, you know, that I got from the town attorney saying that the town board directed her to stop working on the deed.
Forward that to me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we had a conversation. He tells me that his intent is still to move forward with the building. So that, you know, I, well, what's being said and what being, what are being done appear to be two different things.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
All right, I'm making forward right now to you, Steph.
Okay. Any questions for Tal from the board?
No, but Stefan, there was, um, a few years back when they renegotiated the lease, there should be square footage breakdown of what the town occupies versus what the village does.
Uh, okay, when I looked through it and I might have been wrong, it told me what the town occupies, but it didn't tell me what either the total breakout was or, but you're right, it may have told me what the village did and I may have just missed that and not put it together. So I'll go back and take a look at it. I saw that it broke out town square footage, but I didn't, I didn't get that I had any basis for comparison to draw a ratio with, but I, I'll go back and look at it again. Thank you, Gail. Anything else for Tal?
No.
DPW, Anthony?
I'm just going to take off for now, but I'll come back after I'm done with Jewett. Hopefully that won't take very long.
Okay, yeah, I really want you for the exec session at the end.
Okay, yeah, I'll be back.
All right.
How are you?
Good, how are you, Anthony?
Good. I don't have much, uh, because the, basically we've been just been picking up leaves. That, that's all done. We're done picking up leaves.
Oh, so it's the perfect time for me to throw my next pile out there.
Yeah, yeah. You'll have to bring it down to the brush pile. We fixed a water main break on Church Street the other day. And we may have a possible joint leaking on Market Street by Stewart's. We noticed that when it snowed today, that the ground was all white, but that part of the road was not. So we're going to check into that more tomorrow and we may have a service leak on Vernon Street. On the corner of Vernon and Market.
Okay.
And that's basically, pretty much.
When, uh, when we ran the tank dry in the flushing, I did not receive any complaints. I didn't, no, I'm not a Facebooker, but I didn't see it.
We only had one house that didn't have water and apparently the tank, the line didn't run completely dry. It got low enough where it didn't have enough head pressure to push the water up to that house.
All right, so it wasn't my uncle, it's always my uncle.
No. It's a new house that Jimmy Robinson had put out there. So, and the reason why I told, I asked Joe to stop flushing was the alarm system is down out there because they didn't have no telephone line. And there's nobody at the plant and they had to watch the water level. So there was no way to tell that the water level got, you know, lower, you know, where it wasn't to be able to keep up. So until the phone line got fixed, I told them to cancel it until spring.
Okay. So, um, I'm reminded now that I have forgotten, Rob, but we never followed up on that response to Nymer.
Yeah, I'm in the process of doing it. Mary Jo sent, or Dawn sent me the copy of that letter again.
Okay, did we reach out to them and let them know we're working on it?
No, I haven't, not yet, but I can do that tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, please do that at least. I don't know what we're working on.
Yeah, I'm going to draft up a letter to respond back to them. They sent me a copy of their letterhead.
Okay. All right, yeah, give me a call. We can talk about it, walk through it.
All right, okay.
I completely, I completely forgot about it.
The only, the only other thing I have is we're going to start packing stuff up at the old building. So when we get ready to move, we could just pack up our stuff and go.
Okay.
There's a lot of scrap stuff up there and I would like if the village, with the board would give me permission is to take that money and try to purchase a new table for the break room and some new chairs.
I don't have a problem with that.
If that's all right, if we do that.
Sounds reasonable, but let's do that in two phases. Let's do the scrapping and get the money and then let's appropriate funds for the new break room.
Oh, yes, yeah, we'll, we'll do, we'll get the money from the scrap first and then we'll get prices on a new table and stuff and enjoy it that way.
Okay. Doors on yet?
No, they were, they're supposed to be here tomorrow. They're supposed to start putting them on. They showed up the other day. We, we had hopes that they were going to put them on. They pulled in the parking lot and then they drove back out and drove away. So I don't know if they just kind of measured something that they needed to or whatever, but according to Jason, they're supposed to be here tomorrow, I believe.
Okay, and Jason's primary concern now is getting electric hooked up, right?
The electric is on.
Oh, they did that already? Okay, wow.
The electric is on.
He sent that email this morning.
State tell, um, they ran their wires. The plumber's been there. He hooked up the two heaters in the corners. So they're, they're going right along. Well, once they get heat in there, then the, they can put the tiles on the floor and in the bathrooms and we can paint the rooms.
Okay, they're going to put rails on that upper storage facility.
Yeah, it's outside.
All right, no, no use in that, you know, if you started back in the building, no use in that until those.
We're not going to do anything until everything is complete.
Okay. That's looking great, isn't it?
Yes, yes, I can't wait.
Good, anything else?
That's all I got. And Robbie, you want to, you want to talk to him about the truck now or?
Oh, boy.
If he wants me to. Well, we, uh, this, I've been working on this truck. The problem is Ford cannot.
Rob, remind me where we left off. I thought we made a decision to go ahead and move forward with the 2021.
We did.
Okay.
Problem is Ford cannot commit to a date where they're going to start building regular cab pickup trucks. They go by, with these automakers, they go by supply and demand. They, their priority is to build vehicles that they know will sell faster. And people, I am, I've owned pickup trucks ever since I had a driver's license and I do know that the most popular models are extended cabs and crew cab trucks. That's where they're, they sell the most of them. So though, that's where the priority is to build those trucks first. The regular cab pickup trucks like we're specking out for the DPW goes to the back of the line. So Ford cannot commit to, uh, when they're going to build this truck that we want to build. However, Romeo Ford has a regular cab red diesel pickup truck sitting right on their lot right now. And it does have the V plow on it, which will, is going to add to the price that we originally had planned on this truck. I spoke to Anthony and Wayne on this. I was a little not too receptive to the idea at first, but the more I think about it and I've been talking to this, dealing with the salesman from the dealership all the way up until about 20 minutes ago before the meeting. And I think at this point, because we're at a bad time this year, we're, we're down a plow truck. We only got two plow trucks now. One of them breaks down, we only got one plow truck. So we're really at a bad time right now to kind of like be splitting hairs on what we're going to do for a pickup truck. And my recommendation would be, and I spoke to Anthony and and Wayne at great length on this and as to purchase this truck down there, I do have the actual prices, what they're quoting us on it with the V plow on it. And then, uh, well, we can take our plow that we have, because they, you know, Anthony likes the straight blade better. Take our plow that we have, it'll plug right into this truck with no alterations. And then turn around, sell this V plow to get that money back. You know, if we do this route, we can get them a new pickup truck. Probably, they can probably have it up here within the next couple of days. Once the dealership gets done with all their paperwork.
What did we authorize your spend on the 2021 truck?
Well, it was, I think it was 42.5, if I remember correctly. I think it was. Well, the, with the V plow, um, and the bed, they're going to install the bed liner and the backup alarm system. In the, uh, the lighting, uh, the total price is now up to 53,350, $350.
Is this V plow?
Well, I, I, I agree with Anthony. I, I'm not a, I don't like V plows myself. There, it's, there's people out there that they won't use anything else, you know?
You've got a $9,000 difference between the truck we had specked out and this truck.
Yeah.
How much of that $9,000 is this V plow?
About $9,000. They're expensive. Plows are expensive now. They're, they are expensive, especially because they're, you know, this one's stainless steel. Most, a lot of them do come now stainless steel because that's what a lot of people like as opposed to a painted plow, so.
And they won't take it off for us, huh? Despite the fact that they can't meet our.
No, I tried.
Did we have a contract with them in 2020? They had a contract to sell us a vehicle in 2020.
Yes, they did, yep. And the problem is, uh, he tried talking to the owner of the dealership and they have a strict policy down there. Once something's installed on a pickup truck, they don't remove it, you know, they're, they're all, the dealers are different. I, I know of other dealers that, you know, if they have to remove something off a truck to make a sale, they'll do it. But so I, you know, we're kind of at the, at a bad spot right here now, because they're down, you know, down one plow truck. And if one of the two that we got left break down, now we're down to one plow truck.
Is there a note that we could install a plow on?
No.
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 Sweet. Is it going to be hard to sell? Do you think we could sell it?
It's winter time. It would sell probably like cookies.
Yeah, I mean.
Right now, right?
Never used.
We're just going to walk off the lot with a $9,000 plow and the moment we get off the lot, we'll have a $6,000 plow.
Not necessarily, no. Sell it for 9,000. We just got to be firm with the price. I, I don't recommend doing it on Auctions International because they're going to take their, you know, their their percentage cut out of that. So we could do, do a local sale, you know? Local sale and advertising on, uh, you know, I can advertise on Facebook too.
Rob, remind me how we were, where the funds were coming from and what we have for funds?
All right, I don't know. Anthony, you want to explain to them what we could possibly do?
I, I think I talked to Mary Jo about this already when, when we first found out about it. You had put $60,000 in the paved Union Street, which it didn't happen. So you could probably take the money and transfer it out of that to, to, uh, to do this.
How much did we have set aside for the truck? It was 40, wasn't it?
Yeah, I believe, I believe it was 40.
Taking money from Antonio's salary.
Well, for the, for the truck. Yeah, we took the money from Antonio's salary for the truck.
To, to get over what we had, right? So that was the, the remainder to cover what we had over the 40.
Right.
All right, so we need to do it. Um, what I'd ask the board for is.
What's sad about the whole situation was when we thought that this guy in June, he told us there was going to be no problem for us to get this truck. And then he shows up in October and says, we can't get you this truck.
Yeah.
He's trying to put us in a spot.
And the thing is, if we, the thing is, if we go, if at this point, he tried searching the database. Like I said, for us to find a regular cab F350 diesel pickup truck specked out the way we'd want it, which suits their needs. They did, the dealer, the salesman I've been dealing with did a dealer locate at other dealers where they sent out the information, what we're looking for and to see if any other dealers have this in their inventory. And nobody within, I, I don't know, four hours away has anything like this. You know, they have gas jobs at which we don't want, you know, the diesel holds up longer, they go longer intervals between oil changes. The durability is much longer on a diesel. You know, if we're going to invest in a, you know, a pickup truck, I would like to see we get one that lasts them a long time.
What year is, what year truck is it, Rob?
Uh, it's a 21 model. It's, uh, it's down there on their lot right now. I mean, uh, you know, not to put pressure on anybody, if I hit the green light tonight, it's a 21, tomorrow morning. But, um, you know, the thing is, we could try another dealer, but we're going to end up in the same spot we're in now because they're going to search the same database and say, sorry, we can't find the truck you're looking for.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board?
I think if you wait, we're in, we're in a worse spot because anybody who might be looking to buy one will already have bought one, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, that truck there could easily sell tomorrow, you know, I don't, you know, somebody else.
I mean, the plow, like, we want to
Yeah.
get rid of that and, and get that money back.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Snow starts flying and everybody would be covered.
Yeah, I mean, this is a good time of year to, uh, you know, to, if we're going to sell a plow, this is the time of year to do it anyway, so.
The other option is a motion to prohibit snow in Athens this year. Anyone want to make?
I would be in favor of that. I'm not even ready myself. I've been working on trying to get these guys ready for Stowe.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's, uh, the motion I'd like is a motion to purchase the truck for 50 and to transfer necessary funds out of the Union Street paving for now. Then I will sit with MJ and Rob. We'll go through that, make sure that was really what we meant to do. And if we want to transfer monies elsewhere, we'll come back to the board in January and rebalance accounts. But that gets us where we need to be quickly and then we can come back in January and revisit any additional funding movements that we want to do to cover it cleanly. Is that reasonable?
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right, so Rob, you've got the action to schedule a meeting with you and MJ and I for either late this week or next, but, but that shouldn't be before you do the, purchase the truck then, assuming we get a motion passed on this.
Okay.
Okay.
So the motion would be to authorize expenditure, to transfer funds out of Union Street paving budget into the truck budget to allow for a total expenditure of, Rob, 50,000?
53,350 and 50 cents. And I'll offer it.
Rob offered?
I'll second.
Amy second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? So carries.
Should I, uh, call them tomorrow and tell them we'll take, take it? Okay.
Yep.
You heard that, Anthony, right?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'll call them.
We need the roads paved.
Yeah, I know. That, that'll get done too.
We'll get it done.
First we got, first we got a plow first.
Plowed, that's what I meant, not paved. Okay, um, all right, anything else from the DPW?
No, that's all I have.
Any questions from the board for the DPW?
No.
All right, Wayne, fire.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't get a report again this month, but still having a little technical difficulties down here with our new computer system, but um, it's going to be real short and sweet. So far this year, we're up to 102 calls, which is rare for us to go over 100 calls. Rescue 2-5 is all done and lettered up. We have canceled our pizzas, meetings and drills till January. And then come January, we'll see where we are at then. And the last thing is the gear has been ordered and we're looking at a delivery date in April. They're, they're pretty back, they're back though.
Okay, what, what if any meetings are still occurring in the firehouse?
None that I know of, none at all.
That, that should be the policy for the time being.
Yeah, I think the last one, I forget what John said it was, but then after that one, we said no more. We're not allowing any, basically we closed the firehouse down.
Okay. All right, good. And that, that should be standing, I think, until mid-January and then we can reevaluate.
Yeah.
But I think we'll see another surge after Christmas after the one we're seeing now, so. Okay, good, um. Response rates still good?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
Um, where did we leave? So do we get the order in for the new turnout gear?
Yes, yeah, it's all been ordered and, uh, they said possibly April, late April, early May.
Wow.
Yeah, because of COVID and all that, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board to the fire chief? Nope.
I wanted to hear me.
What do you got, Ricky?
Oh, nothing, no.
All right, thank you, Wayne. Police, we do have the report, let me find that real quick. Gail, you want to cover for the police?
Yeah, it looks like we're on budget for the year through everything. The only thing that I didn't see broken down in what Mary Jo sent, I don't know if we've received any monies from the school for the safety officer.
Do we know that we're going to receive the monies from the school for the safety officer? What, well, I guess, how much have we been using it, right?
Uh, well, they, they should be going every day since September.
Okay.
We should have September, October, November. I got to check with Ed to make sure that he sent the bill. But I don't know if anything's been sent back on that, um.
Gail?
Yeah.
We, we haven't received anything from the school.
Okay, so I'll check with Ed?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, um, they've had one arrest in the last 30 days, 18 calls for service. We still have the same issues, unknown status of the building remodel. At this time, the police are not able to question any juveniles because they, that has to be a whole separate room. They're still working on Ed's retirement issues. And here's one note that Roger put in, the village continues to be subjected to issues such as larceny, criminal mischief, et cetera, which juveniles are involved in. All residents should report all incidents as soon as recognized, regardless of how minor they feel the incident is. These incidents may be part of a bigger issue. So just if there's anybody out there that has a complaint, go to the police. Call the police, let them know. And the drug investigation up on Ed Lane has been closed by arrest. And that's all.
Okay. Questions from the board? Do we have Ed or Jeff on? Okay, so there, I've talked to both of them. We're, we're kind of going, uh, kind of taking a three-phased approach here. The first was really kind of a learning phase. Learning how to do fire inspections, learning how to do building inspections and getting caught up on the list that we had. I think we're through that and we're into phase two, which is really keeping up, getting involved in some of the planning and starting to expand into some of the more normal routine. And I'm hoping early next year, we get into what I called phase three, which is the sort of active code enforcement where we want to be. Where we're actually out looking for violations to write up, et cetera. We're not there yet. I'm trying to get them, you know, where they're trained up and keeping up with sort of the day-to-day things that they need to do. I think they're, they're doing a very good job of that right now. They've organized the files, which will be very helpful. So I think we're in a good place. I'm hoping early next year, we kind of start that active code enforcement, which is the real benefit of having the on-duty police officers doing it. So hopefully we start to see that take effect very soon.
Um, did they mention anything about, I know the last meeting, MJ was mentioning that there were some of the Airbnbs that weren't, just weren't filling out the form and registering. So I, she said she was going to pass it on to code enforcement. So I was just wondering if there was any word on that from them.
I haven't, but I'll ask him tomorrow.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
How far are?
How far are we, or close are we to giving up building permits?
We're doing it.
Because the people have been after me since September third, when their permits have been, and they ain't got them yet.
Okay, they had, uh, last I talked to them, they had burned through that original list that they had. So they should be caught up to what we started with, all that done, so.
And now there's a couple with, coupled with the certificate occupancy, they don't have that, and they want to move in the new homes.
Okay, if you've got specifics, send them to me, or or text me, or give me a call tomorrow, and I'll make sure they get them done. Because I think we're, I think they're starting to get, feel caught up anyway, so we need to make sure they know what's out there.
Okay.
Good.
Sounds good.
Anything else? All right, and Seth, let me pull up your report here real quick. All right.
Evening, everybody. Y'all hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, water, and, uh, things pretty, uh, pretty much status quo, uh, nothing really out of the ordinary. Uh, we did have three alarm call-outs during the month, they were all due to power outages. So we called out when the generator comes on, so we go out and check the plant, make sure everything's working the way it should be. Um, Village Sewer Plant, uh, we had four, a little over four inches of rain for the month. Um, most of that came on the thirtieth, um, to, about two and a half inches of rain that, over that night. Um, flows are up three hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons. Um. The, the first of December and the second of December, we had over a million gallons a day go through the plant, based on the rain from the night of the thirtieth. Uh, so flows are up right now for the month of December. Um, there were no compliance issues, though, because of all the rain, we were able to, uh, go into wet, weather operations and everything worked fine, no issues at all. Uh, Brick Row, um, flows again, we're up there, um, six thousand gallons is the average. Um, but again, that, that average has been skewed by the heavy rain on the last day of the month, where we, uh, had twenty-five thousand gallons in one day. So just, you know, heavy rain is what caused it. Um, other than that, uh, everything is operating normally and flowing.
All right, so how much of a flush did we get done on the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth, we were able to flush, uh, from the plant all the way to the tower, the tank on Dogwood.
Okay.
We flushed seventeen different points.
Okay. All right, and, you know, I think we talked about it last time, but I'll be interested to see, now that we've completed the, uh, slip lining, if we see any tangible effect yet.
Um. The night of that rainstorm, the thirtieth, um, rain started about nine o'clock in the morning, from nine to noon, flows went from two hundred gallons a minute to six hundred gallons a minute. From noon to two o'clock, they went from six hundred to a thousand gallons a minute. From two o'clock to roughly five o'clock, they went from a thousand to, uh, sixteen hundred gallons a minute. And from six o'clock to about ten o'clock, they were running about seventeen hundred gallons a minute.
Okay.
So I was interested to see if the slip lining had had any effect, and it doesn't appear that it has.
Okay.
Yeah.
But again, that two and a half inches of rain came hard and fast. Um, so it definitely, you know, it overloaded the system, um. And then it took, it's taken three or four days for flows to come back to normal from all the residual water, so we're headed in the right direction.
All right, so we can expect probably a few, uh, few days out of compliance?
Uh, yeah, we had one day out of compliance last month, uh, we've had, well, we're out of compliance every day this month so far.
Okay.
But we'll, the average comes in at the end of the month.
Yep. All right, any other questions for Seth? Thank you, Seth.
You're welcome, thank you very much. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Good night now.
Now, we leave the department head meeting. Um, I just want to, uh, MJ had sent a note out, uh, we're going to be closing the office. Uh, kind of going back to initial COVID response, so the office will be closed for appointment only and phone calls. Uh, so if you go by, expect to find the door locked, we've got the, um, uh, mailbox out front now, where checks can be deposited, payments can be deposited. Um, but we're going to go back to initial uh, initial COVID protocols of essentially locking down the office, and that'll be in effect, uh, right now through January fifteenth. And we'll reevaluate at our, uh, at our next board meeting. Okay?
Yep, I agree.
All right, uh, so Ellen, uh, so we've got a, a short public, uh, public hearing, public meeting here, rather. Uh, Ellen had sent me something, um, regarding uh, a welcome wagon in Athens and and experience she had, so, uh, I invited her to talk briefly about it. Thank you, Ellen.
Great, thanks, thanks for giving me the time to, uh, share my idea. I hope you don't mind, I, I wrote everything down just so I didn't forget anything, um, but I'll be brief. Um, I was tuning into the village board meeting last month, and, uh, during the discussion about diversity, inclusion, and community building, I thought of something that my village had when I was growing up, which was a welcome wagon. Although it's now a for-profit company called Money Mailer, back then, it was just a couple of ladies ringing the doorbell with a pie or a cake and welcoming the newcomers to the neighborhood to make a personal connection. Uh, I think a welcoming committee would be a great idea for Athens. Uh, when Marilyn and I became full-timers here, after spending weekends for ten years, we didn't know many people and still had so many questions about full-time living in Athens. I would have welcomed the opportunity to meet some local folks to discuss everyday matters such as where is the farm stand, where's the car repair, lawn services, doctor recommendations, where to go to get a good haircut, and basically where and how to meet people, local people. Um, Marilyn and I are also on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan, and this idea, uh, is right in line with many of the recommendations and goals that, uh, were developed in the plan. Uh, so here are my thoughts on how this would work. Um, first, uh, create a booklet with reference information about Athens all in one place. Local government, houses of worship, recreational facilities, uh, local cultural and educational facilities like the library and the cultural center, and local annual events like the stroll, the Oktoberfest, and the APEC concerts. I know a lot of this is on the website, which is great, but having a little reference booklet for people, folks who might not be constantly connected on, to their phones or their computers, might be helpful. It would also be easy to put this together, um, uh, um, this info could be taken from the comprehensive plan and the website, so it would be easy to put together. Uh, it could be put as its own link on the village website, and it can also be given to Realtors to prospective buyers. Um, also, in our monthly village newsletter, we could have a welcome to the neighborhood section and share the names and addresses of our newest residents with their permission, of course. Um, when we do make arrangements to visit, uh, the new residents, in addition to the booklet, we could give them a gift, um, like a small box or basket of goodies or freebies specific to Athens. I was thinking some kind of swag that had a small image of the lighthouse on it, a baseball cap or fridge magnet, water bottle, canvas boat bag, that kind of thing. There are lots of things out there that can be tastefully branded and and doesn't cost a lot of money. Um, I realize that local businesses aren't in the best shape at this time, but offering the newcomers a free beer at Crossroads, or a cup of coffee at the Rooster, a drink at Stewart House, a dessert at Stella's when they reopen, would be a nice gesture and would not be a hardship for the businesses. Um, also, how about a regular once-a-month newcomers' night or happy hour at one of the village, uh, restaurants or bars where our newest village residents can meet one another? Um, although this is not a big part of the idea, we could potentially approach service providers like lawn and landscaping, snowplowing, car repair, to offer discounts for these newest potential customers. Uh, so that's my idea. If there's something like this in Athens already, I, I'm not aware, uh, but as a relative newcomer myself and still trying to make personal connections here, I would have really appreciated opportunities like these to get involved, connected, integrated, and welcomed into our community. These types of interactions and connections between new residents will really help build the sense of community that we all agree is needed, especially now. Um, so I'm willing to spearhead this along with a small committee if the board thinks it's a good idea.
Sounds fine with me.
You know who, I, yeah, I think it's a good idea. Any, any other comments from the board?
I think it's great. Sounds nice.
Sounds nice, yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do you have an idea, Ellen, of who else you'd want on the committee?
I have somebody else who's interested in working with me, um. She might, she might have some recommendations, but if there's anybody watching tonight at this meeting, or if you know of anybody, uh, who might be interested, I, I'll just put my email address in the chat, and you can reach out to me. I only, I think we only need maybe four or five people, not, uh, not including myself to, uh, to do this.
Okay. So I think that's the go-ahead, I, uh, any, any board member interested in being a liaison to, to help get them started and make sure they've got a liaison with the board?
Um, I suppose that should be me, since we're already doing the communications committee and the newsletter and the website and all of that stuff, so dovetails quite nicely, actually.
All right, so you've got a liaison.
That's great, thanks, Amy. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
So I'm just gonna put my email.
Excellent, thank you, Ellen. And for the record, Merrill.
That's great, I, I'll keep, I'll keep you posted.
Okay, excellent. And for the record, Merrill is interested in an appointment onto the waterfront committee. Thank you. All right, and yeah, Merrill is interested in an appointment on the waterfront committee, uh, for future reference as well, so we'll make sure that's noted, and, uh, I, I emailed him earlier about how we go about doing that, so he's got that info. Thank you again, Ellen. All right, so we got some business, uh. Sorry?
My pleasure, thanks.
All right, any comments or concerns over the minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve minutes?
I'll offer that.
I'll second.
Amy? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? So carries. Were we able to review vouchers?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to this week.
I was not either.
All right, so it sounds like we're gonna have to postpone approval of vouchers this week. So Dom will carry those over into the next. All right, so we've got a proposed resolution reappointing registrar and deputy registrar positions. Whereas the two-year appointment for registrar and deputy registrar about to expire on December twentieth, and the village board is the authority for the appointment, it resolves the village board, reappoint clerk treasurer, Mary Jo Winn, as registrar, and deputy clerk treasurer, treasurer, Don Palmetier, as deputy registrar for the Bureau of Vital Records for New York, uh, State Department of Health. Any questions or concerns over that?
No.
Anyone like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
That was Ricky?
I'll second.
Amy? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Anyone opposed? So carries. All right, now, let's see here, okay. Um, so next is, uh, on our continued, uh, continued tracking towards, uh, Climate Smart Community. Um, there is, and I'll talk about another grant opportunity that just came up regarding that here at the end. Um, but, uh, we have a proposed resolution to adapt a climate resilience vision. Uh, Josh, you saw, you want to give us a little background on what this is and how it ties into Climate Smart?
Sure, thanks so much, Stefan. Um, we, uh, the village, uh, did sign a letter of support uh, back in December of twenty nineteen, a year ago, uh, to create this climate resilience vision in twenty twenty, which you now have before you, uh, with three weeks left in the year. Uh, then in March of this year, uh, the village adopted the Climate Smart Communities pledge. Um, the pledge and the vision are both, uh, projects, uh, that are part of the Climate Smart Communities program. Uh, we've been working with Cornell Cooperative Extension, and, um, Ms. Kelsey West from Cornell Cooperative Extension is on the call with us, uh, this evening. Um, uh, so, uh, starting in March, Cornell Cooperative Extension began attending the Comprehensive Plan meetings, s- so that we had those integrated, the Climate Smart Community and the Comprehensive Plan, uh, meetings. Uh, in fact, in June, uh, Cornell Cooperative Extension assisted us in the development of an environmental section for the survey that ended up going out, and, um, for which we collected about five hundred, uh, responses, uh, during July and August. In October, uh, Cornell Cooperative, uh, created this draft, a draft climate resilience vision based on the input from the survey and the, uh, public, uh, meeting that the town and village had jointly, and the meetings of the steering committee. Uh, it was sent, this draft was sent to, um, our Conservation Advisory Council initially for input, uh, last month. Then it was out for public comment for about ten days, uh, from the twenty-fourth to the fourth. And, um, then, uh, late last week, or, uh, actually, early this week, the final document was completed with edits, uh, based on public comments. And that's the draft that's before the board right now. If this is approved, we get points for this, uh, as we do also if the, uh, comprehensive plan is adopted this evening, and I believe that with those points, that should take us over the top, uh, for the points that we need uh, to submit to the state for, uh, Climate Smart Community, uh, certification in, in January.
The, um, the larger document, the, uh, the PDF document, the Climate Resilience Vision, is that a part of the comprehensive plan, or is that a separate document?
Um, that is not part of the comprehensive plan, that's a separate document.
Questions from the board?
No.
So the resolution reads, whereas the village of Athens believes the climate hazards pose a real and increasing threat to local environments and strives for climate resilience, and whereas Cornell Cooperative Extension of Columbia and Green Counties, with approval from the village board, has prepared a climate resilience vision, including gathering community input on what a community that is resilient, resilient to climate hazards would look like in the future, and whereas the resilience vision includes guiding principles to ensure that climate resilience progress is consistent with communities' desired outcomes, and whereas the village board believes that adoption of the village of Athens Climate Resilience Vision will further the goals of climate resiliency, therefore be resolved that the village of Athens adopts the village of Athens Climate Resilience Vision. Would anyone like to offer that?
I'll offer it.
Rob?
I'll second.
Gail? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? So carries. Thank you, Josh. And thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
All right, and now we've got some work to do here. We got a couple, a couple of steps we need to follow. I will try to guide us through this a little bit, Josh. You gave me an excellent, uh, instruction manual here to follow, but make sure I, keep me honest, make sure we stay, um, in line. Now, I'm hesitant to try to share my screen. Do you think it's worth doing, Josh, to share the screen, to go through some of these attachments?
Um, I don't know that, that they're, they're wordy documents, I'm not sure people will be reading them in real time if they're also wanting to listen to you, um. And they're, they're fairly jargon, they're full of a lot of jargon, as they're required to have that jargon in them because of their official nature.
All right, most of it, most of the, the lengthy. All right. Most of it, most of the lengthy aspects of the documents of the seeker forms, which everyone should be at least moderately familiar with. And those ultimately result in a negative declaration. And a negative declaration being essentially good, it means that we, negative, negative impact, there are no negative impacts on the environment. So it's kind of a double negative. I think we talked about this every time we do one of these. But the, the negative declaration means that there are no negative, no perceived negative impacts on the environment through this. And a seeker is a mandatory part of adopting the Comprehensive Plan.
Stefan, may I add one thing?
You may.
Yeah. Just a segue from our last conversation, which is that not only is there no negative from the Comprehensive Plan, but we went in the opposite direction, bringing in Cornell Cooperative Extension and focusing on a very pro-environment resolution. So the board can feel comfortable in its acceptance of the negative declaration, not only because there are no negative effects, but in fact, there are positive impacts.
Yeah. And I thought the, I don't remember which of the documents it was, but the, the summary document that was provided on it, I think did a really nice job of spelling all that out. Which one is this called? Adoption of 2020 Updated Town and Village Comprehensive Plan, Part Three Narrative. So the narrative articulating reasons. I thought did a really nice job of spelling out not just the not negative aspects of it, but in fact, a lot of very good positive aspects that come out of the Comprehensive Plan. Okay? So with that, let me find the right one here. We need a resolution. That's the wrong one. Sorry. Bear with me here. So we need a resolution to approve the negative declaration of the seeker. Is that right, Rob? Josh, am I doing this in the right order?
A motion, actually.
A motion. Thank you. Motion to make it, yep. So we need a motion to make a negative declaration via the Part Three. Everyone has all the documents in your inbox. Any questions on that? Any concerns on that? Josh can help us out.
I, I do, I, I do think, I mean, it's, this is, for people who may, who are listening in the public, this is a, a very standard, conventional action to take. And it essentially says, as we've said now, two or three times in the course of the discussion, that if we adopt the Comprehensive Plan, that we, we, the board determines there is no negative environmental impact from that.
Okay.
So I'll open that resolution.
All right. Gail made the motion?
I'll second it.
That was Rob seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? Ricky is opposed. Do you wanna discuss it at all, Ricky?
No.
So most.
I don't think it's, will benefit the village, and I think this plan's gonna hurt the village in the long run.
Okay.
That's my feeling. They're trying to fix something and it broke.
Okay. Okay. Passes with a vote of four to one. All right. Next is... So we gotta file the forms which we've got. So next is adoption of the plan, correct, Josh?
Yes.
Okay. This one I'm not gonna read aloud because it's two or three pages long here. Everyone, again, has it in their inboxes. Any questions or discussion on the... So this is the resolution to adopt the Comprehensive Plan for the village. Any discussion on that?
I got one for Tao.
Tao's not on right now. He's gonna join us in a little while.
Oh, okay. Good. They said guideline. Do we have to, or do they have, do we have to follow them guidelines?
No. No.
No.
No, it's, Ricky, that, the Comprehensive Plan is, it's a vision, it's a blueprint. It does not have the force of law. And it's intended to last maybe another 10 or 15 years. And as the elected officials of the village change over time, so will the tastes and interests of those officials. And they will, over time, choose to take different parts to emphasize. Or there may be periods of time when nothing is emphasized in that plan. And no, no work is done on any aspect of it.
The benefit of it is that if at any time, whatever the elected leadership of the village is, wants to go after state monies, many of the state grants will give extra points to make the application more competitive. If A, you have a Comprehensive Plan, and then B, the thing that you're applying for money for is endorsed in your Comprehensive Plan, but it does not have the force of law, and nobody has to do anything about it at all if you don't want to.
One of the biggest strengths of the BOA application that we made last year was that we were able to directly quote the Comprehensive Plan on the applicability of some of the things we wanted to do with that BOA. So, yeah, it gives, that gives us a lot of strength and other. And there's already been two other grant applications. One, I just literally got about 30 minutes before we started the meeting, so I haven't had time to look at it. But Delaware Engineering has started forwarding me grant applications that are pertinent to Climate Smart Community and, and others. And both, both of them, certainly the one that I looked at, on, it's called a local champion, Climate Smart Local Champion Grant. And it, one of the first questions is, is there a Comprehensive Plan?
I don't think we're actually eligible for that one, Stefan.
I know. I was looking at it earlier. It looked like a good opportunity, but we won't be eligible till April is what it looks like.
Well, if it's the one I'm thinking of, it's, it's to pay $8,000. Yeah, we're, we're too far along. That's for people who have barely started.
Oh.
We're about, we're about to submit our application in January. So, yeah.
All right. Well, I've got another one. I haven't had time to read yet, so I'll take a look. All right. Anyway, let's come back to the targeted hand here, which is, is there any further discussion on adoption of the Town and Village Comprehensive Plan? Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the Town and Village Comprehensive Plan?
I'll offer it.
Rob?
I'll second.
Gail? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Ricky, did you vote on that one?
Yeah, I voted.
Okay. All right. Got that. All right. Josh, thanks again. And please thank the, the committee for me. And, and, you know, I appreciate the work that you guys did on that and getting it done as quickly as you did. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. I shall. Thank you.
Okay. So the correspondence, I have to admit, on the first one, I was looking for it today. The Green County Solid Waste Management, MJ suggested that Anthony might have it. I don't see him sitting there next to you anymore. Wayne, are you aware of what this is about? Is the, are the hours changing out at the waste management, waste treatment plant?
Yeah, apparently with the COVID and the, something about their changing their hours a little bit, just temporary.
Okay. I, I couldn't find that correspondence. MJ said it should be in our inboxes, but I couldn't find it.
I believe it's in the newsletter.
Ah.
The Village Newsletter. Didn't we put that in there, Nancy?
I will find it there.
Yeah.
I think we put it in there. Yeah, um, it's not the Catskill one, but Cuxacki, Hunter, and Wyndham.
Right.
Okay.
Their main plant, they, they won't change the hours there. Okay. See the other ones.
Here, here's a link to some info.
Thank you. All right. Next one is the Marshall and Sterling Premium Summary. That actually is a binder in the office, so anyone can go take a look at that. It looks like it went up about almost $2,000 this year, which isn't actually surprising. When I talked to him last year, I think that's a fairly normal increase and one that we had.
I don't think it went up that much, Mayor.
Did it not? I thought it went up from about 68.5 is what I recall.
No, it went up, uh, I don't think, I think it went up 1.3%. So it's not bad. It just gotta be signed.
Okay. I'll go in and sign it this week. So we talked about the slip lining project. That's been completed. They had some trouble grouting some of the, the areas on Second Street, but they were able to cover all the areas out on North Franklin.
Yes, it's all done.
New DPW building. Rob, you wanna cover that at all?
Um, yeah, that, that's pretty, like Anthony said, electric's been turned on. Open tomorrow, we'll get the overhead doors installed and then get the heat running. I'm still hoping for end of the month move-in. We'll see what happens. We had planned on moving in last month, but as we all know, COVID has an effect on everything, and we were no exception to it because it delayed the delivery of building materials and we also had.
COVID for that?
Yes, absolutely. And we also had some building materials damaged during shipment, so we had to wait an additional two weeks.
That was, that was the one I knew about. That was the real delay, right? Was the stuff damaged?
Yeah, that was. But, well, COVID, it, I think it was the HVAC crew ended up going on quarantine for two weeks. From what I was told.
Okay.
So that delayed another two weeks there. So, so before you know it, we were in, now in the December now. So, but everything's moving along good. The salt shed, the wall's been sprayed with the asphalt from Peckham's. We're just waiting on the roof structure to get installed, which I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks that will arrive. And once the roof structure's on, we could start putting the salt in.
Okay.
So we're hoping maybe by January 1st, we'll have everything all done.
Nice. Um, I've been emailing with Jason today a little bit. I'll probably put a meeting together with the three of us. I wanna talk through, you know, kind of these last bits, the lighting plan. Make sure we've got a landscaping plan for the spring to make sure it looks all cleaned up and neat and that kind of thing. You know, the, it, the firehouse looks so nice. I wanna make sure we carry that, you know, so the village spaces look good back there reasonably. Yeah. So we'll, so he, Jason started to put kind of a quick plan together for me. So I wanna talk about those three things before we close out the building and make sure we've got that right. So I'll, I'll set something up with the three of us this week.
Okay. Yep.
All right. And then the old DPW building under old business. We've got two offers, so we're gonna be going into executive session to discuss.
And Tao's back.
Tao is back? Excellent. Good. Good timing. I actually, I actually just texted him, let him know we're about to do it. So we'll go into executive session to review the offers that we have on the old DPW building. So before we do that, I guess I had forgotten, we'll go around and make sure everyone, see if anyone else has any other business. Gail?
I'm all set.
Okay. Rob?
Uh, we, I think we covered it all. I only had the pickup truck and the update on a DPW building on my list, so I'm all set too. So we covered it all.
Very good. Ricky?
No, I'm all set.
Amy?
I'm good.
Wow, this is easy tonight. Dawn?
No, I'm good.
Tao, anything else before we go into executive?
Nothing more for me.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick updates. We talked about that. So two things, both Brick Row. The developer who was looking to do the 93 acres has gotten in touch with me again. So I need to set up a time to go meet with him. He, he is telling me that he is intending to get started on that. He's got some other developers he's brought on board to start developing on that parcel. I have been working with Maggie, kinda to make sure that we have our ducks in a row on what our expectations are around that development and what teeth we have. And I think we're in good shape to make sure that he does something appropriate back there as we move forward with it. So he's been talking about it for probably over a year. He had told me it was turned off. Now he's telling me it's turned on and they're getting ready to go. In addition to that, just on the south side of Brick Row is a 17-acre waterfront parcel that kind of sits between Brick Row and Rainy Field. It has been, apparently it's been for sale for a while. There is someone who's looking to buy it. Their attorney contacted me about the moratorium and about usage that, uses that might be applicable there. They're looking to do, I guess what I'd call glamping. You know, I, I encourage that. So glamping in and of itself is a little bit of a stretch against, you know, anything in mixed-use waterfront requires a special use permit. So it has to be a special use permitted use to be able to go there. To do non-permanent structures, and this is what I told them, to do non-permanent structures, in my view, is a little bit of a stretch against what was worded on, in the Comprehensive Plan, I'm sorry, in the zoning for it. And that, I thought it was, the zoning obviously pushed much more for sort of permanent structures. They were amenable to that and are, I believe, still moving forward based on the last inputs that I had from them. So I'll let you know as that continues to move, what they're looking to do. It's, it's real marshy down the water area. He was talking about, you know, that she's interested in kind of putting some walkways, boardwalk type things out to the water. So I haven't seen any plans for it. All I got is kind of an initial interest from their attorney on that. I did also have one more call with the CND team there. We were, you know, we had talked a little while ago, Parks and Rec and Sena Hudson are still interested in moving forward with that property. Um, but there was still a contract. And we knew that when we went out and did an assessment of it. The contract had, we knew the contract was set to expire on October 17th. When we had our last meeting about two weeks ago, they informed me that the contract hadn't expired, which got me rather concerned. And about two days later, the attorney from the CND project reached out, wanted to have a meeting. And it was actually the president of the company, the engineer, several people all joined the call and, um, told me, you know, how interested they are in Athens and what great things they're gonna do for the community. And it's not gonna be asphalt and concrete anymore. It's only gonna be clean filled dirt. Um, and they had a landscaping plan to block it. And I let them go for about 10 minutes and then told them that, uh, our Comprehensive Plan is very clear and is requesting that I change the zoning and not allow industrial uses on the waterfront, which brought the entire meeting to an abrupt end, which is what I had hoped for. So that contract is set to expire middle of this month. So I will follow up and verify that the contract expires. The good news is there's no permits or registration requests in with the DPW right now. So it, it really felt like they were just feeling me out to see if they could get me interested. But I think the, the zoning changes that are spelled out in the Comprehensive Plan should put a, a final end to it. But I will let everybody know as we continue to move forward where we are with that. That was all I had. Okay. So we've gone around. So next will be an executive session. Again, for those on the call, once we go into executive, I'll have to ask everyone to drop off. We will not conduct any additional business after executive session. So that, because I wouldn't have any way to, to reconvene. So we will not do any additional business after executive session. All right. So with that said, would anyone like to make a motion to enter executive session? I'll give Ricky made the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Amy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Okay. Thanks, everybody. We're gonna keep Tao. We're gonna keep Don Fontaine. Don, you're welcome to stay on as well.
I'm gonna pause the recording now.
Thank you.